Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our meeting. The date is December seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. The time is seven P. M. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The City of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The City Council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, I ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The deputy city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Connolly will be absent. Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil. Councilmember Pollock.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
And Mayor Still.
Present. Also present is Sonia Cisneros, the deputy city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator, CFO, Matthew Gleason, the finance director, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the public works director. Individuals who have appropriate items for City Council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. I understand that Mr. Nickerson is pulling items seven H and seven O from the consent agenda. Are there any other consent agenda items that council members would like to pull for further discussion? Hearing none, we will continue. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking.
Say if you did not.
Yes, I have, I have your name, Mr. Vavertek. Thank you. Hearing no others, we will continue. The first item on our agenda is six A, recognition of all state musicians. At our last meeting, we honored the all state musicians from Northwest High School and their instructors. Tonight, we are privileged to honor the all state musicians and their instructors from Grand Island Senior High School. It is important that we acknowledge the great work that our schools and our young people do in making our city a great place to live. To be selected as an all state musician requires hard work and dedication to your music, whether it be choir or instrumental music. It is an important reminder that all state means just that. These young people must compete with musicians from across the state to be selected. Mrs. Cisneros and I will present each musician and their instructors with certificates and a City of Grand Island pin to express our deep gratitude. What a fine looking group. We're going to start with the all state musicians who participated in choir, starting with Tessa Bachoven. Cadence Giedcom. Catherine Johnson. Adeline Woods. Catherine Laughing. Kennedy Miller. Alexander Kubler. Noah Jaworski. Orvin Rubio Hernandez. Elijah Meyer Juarez. Kale Wiegert. Louis Fierro. And their instructors, Jessie Labrie and Abby Bloom. I understand Abby could not be here tonight. I'm going to give you her certificate and say congratulations. Mr. Labrie. I ask Mr. Labrie to say a few words about his remarkable choir students.
Well, I am honored that all of you take time to honor these fine young people. They really are the best of what our high school has to offer. They work very hard on developing their talent, and it's no small feat to come together and bring beauty to the world. And that's what we really strive to do, and we strive to work to impact other human beings with the human experience, with emotion and text. And they really are remarkable, remarkable young people. How many of you are going to go to college and be a music, study to be a music teacher? So we have some of them that are going to continue or go to college and just be part of an ensemble. Hopefully, all of you raise your hand. So we don't want music to stop here. We want music to continue, and it's really, it's really a blessing to work with such talented people every, every single day. And on behalf of Ms. Bloom, who is in charge of putting all of this together, actually, she's, she is very active in her church and had some responsibilities there, but she organized all the kiddos this year. I think we had about twenty audition, and we had twelve individuals make it, so we're very proud of their work. So thank you so much again for honoring us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Labrie. Very well said. And now, having honored the choir students, we're going to talk about the instrumental musicians, starting with Caitlin Sadomka on French horn in band. Kalen Biberos, tenor saxophone jazz band. Paige Bergland, bassoon orchestra. Paige takes lessons from my wife. I've got to listen to her for some years now, and she has made remarkable progress as a musician. Brennan Clark, French horn orchestra. Gabriella Meyer, harp orchestra. And now, one of the instructors, Bob Lineman. And I understand Dr. Evan Lee could not be here, so I will give you his certificate as well, as well as Gabriella Meyer's. Sir, I think you'd like to say a few words about your instrumental musicians.
Again, I want to echo what Mr. Labrie said. Thank you all for acknowledging the students. They come in and they work their butts off for us every day. And as Mr. Labrie was saying, fine arts are really important in helping teach people how to be human and humanity, and that's what we're trying to push with this, and I'm really lucky to get to work with all of these students on a daily basis. So thank you to you all for all the hard work you've put in to make this work.
Thank you, sir. Another round of applause for these remarkable young people. Now, you're all sitting there nervously thinking, do we have to stay for the whole meeting? You do not, and I'll give you a moment. You can stay if you want, but I'll give you a moment. If you'd like to leave now, you can. You're welcome to stay. But people often sit and wonder if they're trapped. Thank you again for being here. Ladies and gentlemen, we have another important person to honor tonight, and that is Mr. Chad Nabody. Mr. Nabody has been employed by the city for twenty-five years. He was hired on December seventeen, nineteen ninety-nine, as a city planning director. On July two, two thousand twenty-three, he became community development director with the added responsibility of directing the building department. Mr. Nabody has distinguished himself by his passion for public service, his integrity, his professionalism, and his dedication to continuing development and innovation in the field of community planning. Mr. Nabody, it is my privilege to present to you this twenty-five year service award, and it states, "We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Chad Nabody for your loyalty, diligence, and dedicated service during your tenure with the City of Grand Island," signed by your department director, Laura McAlune, and me as mayor. Congratulations, sir, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Never had a loss for words.
And I'll walk up to the podium that I'm used to. It has been a very eventful, but quick twenty-five years. I've been privileged to serve this body and the county board. Tomorrow, I will be going to the NACO meeting for the county side of my job, and I really appreciate that I have the opportunity to work both with the third largest municipality in the state of Nebraska. It still was when I started. We're fourth now, but we're the, we're the third largest independent city, because Bellevue's really part of Omaha. We're never going to catch them again. To, but to be here and to be helping this community grow, there have been incredible changes in the past twenty-five years, as many of you know, and I am anticipating that we will have more changes in the near and distant future.
Another round of applause for a great city employee, Chad Nabody. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we take up agenda item six C, Heartland Event Center Budget Presentation. Mr. Brown, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So tonight, we have our initial budget presentation for the Heartland Events Center, which is now operated by Venue Works. And to give you this presentation, we have Kyler Tarwater, executive director for Heartland Events Center. Kyler?
Hello, everyone. Nice to be here tonight. We're going to cover some basic elements, the revenue, the expenses, and the total, the summary at the end, just to go over our initial budget for two thousand twenty-five. I hate to go through this. I think everybody has this in front of them, and I'm just going to go through the hit list, and if there are questions, bring them up, of course, and I'll answer where I can. Our proposed revenues start with building rent, and that includes the arena and conference center. At just over a quarter million dollars, at two hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Next up on the list is contractually obligated revenue. That includes naming rights, premium seating, signage, displays, print advertising, event sponsorships, and pouring rights. And just one note on that, Chris Carton is our director of food and beverage, and he's already secured a new deal with Pepsi, and it's roughly a five-year deal, which brings in revenues and, and marketing support of roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's a good jumpstart that he's given us on this, the revenue side of things. Next on, the total there was just, just over a quarter of a million dollars, again at two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. Reimbursed event expenses comes in at three hundred nine, two oh seven in these forward-looking statements. Food and beverage, considering concessions and catering, is roughly a half a million dollars at five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars and seven hundred and sixteen. And other revenues include tickets, merchandising, and other fees that go along with it at one point three million dollars. So for a total revenue forecast of two point six eight eight, five hundred and fourteen dollars in revenues. Next, the less fun side of things, cost of goods sold at one point two sixty-eight. I'm sorry, did you? Sorry, I think. One point two million in cost of goods sold. Personnel cost at just shy of a million dollars at nine hundred and seven thousand dollars. One thing that we do have in our, in our favor is we will staff the entire office. Right now, we've hired roughly six or seven people, most of which are from here in Grand Island, and we'll have a full staff there focused fully on the event center and Boston Conference Center to make sure that it's run as smoothly as it could be. It's also our goal to bring in a lot of part-time help, once again, from this area to actually add to the real support and focus on the event center. General administrative costs at seventy-five thousand dollars, occupancy costs at four hundred and forty-seven, service and operation costs at one sixty-one, event expenses at two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, and food and beverage expenses at forty thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars, for a total of expense target at three point one million dollars. Leaving us at the revenue line of two point six eight million dollars, with expenses of three point one, at a net operating loss of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, roughly five hundred thousand dollars in net operating loss, and owner operating investment from, for, from the, from the hotel occupation tax at five, at roughly five hundred thousand dollars. Bringing us to a state of net income of zero, which, coming out of the corporate world into this sort of world, that just sounds awful to say a net income of zero, and we hope that that's going to improve, and I, and I have no reason to believe it won't, but that's where we stand today.
Mr. Tarwater, we're going to pause a moment and see if any of the council members have any questions or comments for you. Mr. Nickerson.
Thank you, Kyler. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your job and what you're going to be doing down there. I was just curious, I know when Venue Works was here talking about some of the things that they'd observed, they thought there was quite a bit of upside in food and beverage, and is that what your numbers represent? Are these all based on a lot of historical data that's come down?
It's based on both, but there is certainly some upside, and I think the upside is stronger long-term. A lot of the, a lot of these budget numbers are based on the history of what's happened there. You know, the team that has put in their work there has, they've put in a lot of work there, and it's a big campus, and it's a big event center. They've catered, they've used outside catering a lot of times, whereas we'll probably lean a little more heavily on our own internal catering, which is certainly a revenue center for us. And if we do that well, that should, you know, have a strong increase just in food and beverage revenues, but also the, you know, there are service charges that go along with that, and there's some add-on revenue that come along with some of those service charges, and as a whole, I think we can do a pretty strong job at improving the food and beverage revenue.
Okay. Just curious, as I remember some of the observations they made and what you thought. So it may be better than five hundred and thirty-one. You don't know that.
Certainly could. And I'll tell you, I'll share just one little piece that I think is really interesting. Chris Carton, again, our VP of Food and Beverage, he's done this in Oshkosh, and I've seen it, and I haven't had experience with this, but he showed me the pictures of what they did in Oshkosh, and they, what they're called grab-and-go stations, and this is part of our deal with Pepsi and Frito-Lay, for that matter. But instead of having to wait in line at a concession stand or at a bar, for someone that just wants a bag of chips or a nacho or, you know, just a quick water bottle, they'll just walk through, they'll grab, there's stations that are set up, and I believe we're targeted to have four on the concourse, so they don't have to wait, they don't have to have the human interaction, which some people don't like, so they can just grab their drink, pay for it, and get going. And I think that's an element that not only adds to the revenue, but the overall aesthetics of the building, when you see that, it just, it makes a somewhat dry concourse feel just a little bit more alive, so I think that's something that will also help in almost extra revenue that we wouldn't have normally gotten from concession stands.
All right, very good. Well, thank you.
Mr. Tarwater, I appreciate you being here tonight. It's always nice to see you.
Ah, thank you.
Have a nice evening.
I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
I just want to note that this is a nine-month budget, so it's January to September.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We'll take up the consent agenda. Again, items seven H and O have been pulled. Council members on item seven I. One of the listed entities is Crown Lazy D LLC. My wife and I are members of that LLC, therefore, we have, I have a conflict of interest. Mr. Sheard, I'll let you call for approval of the consent agenda, if you would, and lead any discussion in that regard.
We need a motion to approve the consent agendas, items seven A through N without H or O. Mr. Lanfair.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, A through O with the exceptions of, or with the exceptions of H and O.
All right. Mr. O'Neil.
I, I second with the same request as well as removing H and O.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard, and I'll be calling on you later for item eight C. So now, we'll take up seven H, approving fire department PPE purchase. Hello, Chief Schmidt. It's always nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Mayor and Council. You said seven H PPE?
Yes. I'm sorry. H. Yeah, approving fire department grant application. My mistake.
That's okay. This is just to ask permission to apply for a grant, and if awarded, accept through the AFG program, which is the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. The grant would be used to purchase dive rescue equipment, and there's a ten percent match. The grant request would be approximately fifty thousand with a five thousand dollar local match. Unfortunately, it appears that we're not going to be eligible to apply for this grant. This had to be put in place due to the December thirty-first deadline. This was obviously the last council meeting of the month. When we did this, we were still hopeful that we would be able to apply. We haven't got the, the official word yet that we cannot, but all indication is this grant will not pay for this type of item. That being said, I really appreciate this opportunity to be in front of council, because I think- I think it's a good, it's a good item to talk about. The dive rescue program is currently ran by volunteers that are very dedicated. They're housed out of the rural fire department. And just like a lot of volunteer organizations, they're struggling to maintain the numbers needed to accomplish this type of work. So we're seeing a decline in volunteers to perform the dive rescue when it is needed. And that's very concerning. We're obviously in the position in Grand Island to need dive rescue at times. Typically, on average, we respond to one to two dive rescue-type incidents a year. We rely on the rural agency to do that. And again, it's dwindling down in numbers and reliability. That being said, we currently have two certified divers on staff that are ready to go sometime in the future. Should this not work out for the grant application, we're going to continue to look for other sources of funding and try and move forward with this plan. But our goal is to get six to eight personnel trained in dive rescue. And along with that training, there comes equipment. And right now, the total estimate for training and equipment is around $55,000. There is about 40 hours of training required that we would have to pay the salaries for, but roughly $55,000 to accomplish this type of team. And in the past, speaking from experience, we've responded to drownings here in Grand Island. And our people are faced with that terrible situation of there's people there watching, the victim has gone underwater. We're not the people or the entity trained to find them at that point. We do surface water rescue. Once that victim sinks, we're unable to do anymore. At that point, we call in the dive rescue team. And again, as a volunteer group that isn't staffed at a fire station, they're not always readily available. There's a time delay, and that puts us in a bad, bad position. It puts the victim's loved ones in a bad position. We just want to be better prepared in the future to have a better response to that type of situation. And I think we do, again, one to two ICE rescues each year. And an ICE rescue typically, when a victim actually goes under the surface, they're still viable for up to an hour or so. This has the potential for us, even if it is a dive operation, to actually save someone, perform CPR, get them to the hospital, and hopefully revive them and save them, even though it's a dive rescue operation. So this doesn't just make up body recovery or victim recovery. There is a possibility for actually saving a life with this. And I think for the citizens of Grand Island, this would be a great investment. And again, hopefully, this grant opportunity comes through, and we can do it. If not, you'll be hearing from me probably in a different fashion, asking for the same thing in the future.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Nickerson?
I make a motion to approve 7H.
Mrs. Mendoza?
I'll second that.
And Mr. Nickerson, discussion?
Chief, I'm glad that you're here tonight to elaborate on this, and I appreciate you taking a proactive approach to meet a need that we obviously have. And I was wondering if we are able to secure $55,000 and we get everything we need to put in place. How often does additional training need to take place in these areas?
There's annual training. Again, the initial training itself, to become a rescue diver, is around 40 hours. Each year, we'd have to maintain the skill level through continuing education and training. And a lot of that could be accomplished at places like Ellie Ray. We just have to have a certain number of hours diving and cover all the key areas to maintain proficiency. But I think the more time-consuming thing might be just regular training so we stay proficient.
I think you hit it on the head when you say there's nothing more frustrating than family members trying to get closure on this tragic situation and you being helpless to do anything. And I would encourage you, if the grant doesn't go for it, as you alluded, that you may be back in another fashion. And I would say for $55,000, it's money well invested in our community to help in these tragic situations. Although they're few, when they occur, as a first responder, you want to be able to do everything you can in a timely manner. And right now, you cannot. So I would be supportive of having this discussion with or without a grant. But it's something that we obviously really need to look at, and I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Thanks.
Mr. Hossi?
Chief, I remember, although it's a while back, we actually bought a boat. And I believe it was on, we used it at Ellie Ray for training. Do we still have that boat, or is that part of the equipment that's necessary?
The boat you're probably referring to, we've since replaced. We got some donations through, actually, a big portion through Gary's Quality Automotive. We have purchased a new boat. It's not part of the equipment needed, but it does help us perform those dive functions in the future. But that boat helps us currently with surface water rescue and the things that we're currently doing. But it's not specifically for that, but the boat will definitely help. And that boat, if I remember right, we purchased it about two or three years ago, it was around $10,000. And it's very well set up right now, and much better than the inflatable boat we had in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Corey.
Motion adopted.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Pollock, I don't think we got your vote.
I've got nothing. I've got nothing on my screen.
Count your vote, please.
I'd vote yes.
7O, approving submission of the 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grant Funding to HUD. Good evening, Mrs. Alvidrez. Please present for us.
Yes, so this report is our evaluation and review report that we submit to HUD. It kind of reviews our usage and how many people that we have been able to benefit throughout the last year. And also, it shows in regards what we've done throughout our five-year kind of consolidated plan, strategic planning that we did, and where we've met on those goals.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson?
Make a motion to approve 7O.
Mr. Sheard?
I second that.
Mr. Nickerson, discussion?
Amber, thank you for being here. I know that there are other things you'd probably rather be doing on a Tuesday night, but I always appreciate when you come by and just visit with us about questions that I might have. First of all, I want to thank you for your administration of the program and all the stuff that goes into that. When I'm looking at a report like this, as you already know, I just have questions when I see a worksheet with a lot of goals, and some we've been able to do something with, and some we haven't been able to do anything with. I just, I'm looking for your opinion on, are our goals where we want them to be? Are they where they should be? Or is it just the whole movement of life and things that happen that kind of change our direction? Just how's that all shake out for us when we see all these goals?
Yeah, so I think this, we were kind of in a peculiar position with this caper and it being the last year of our five-year strategic plan or goal. So we create our consolidated plan every five years, and that acts as our strategic plan. If you remember, we just approved our new one in August to be submitted to HUD for what we're working on currently. So this one was created in 2019, at the beginning of 2019. And we started our program year that year in October. And kind of the goals that we had found through our community meetings and things like that kind of changed a lot once 2020 hit. And the community needs that were needed after COVID came versus the goals that we had decided on the prior year. Just some of those projects were no longer doable that we were planning and that we had placed within our strategic plan and our goals. One of the other large issues was that with our funds regularly, we have a very small percentage that we can use in kind of public service-type grants, and that's really supporting our nonprofit partnerships and organizations that can help then with providing their services. And for 2020, 2021, and 2022, the federal government kind of lifted that cap and told us that we could use all of our funds for public services. And so I think one of the big things that we noticed was a lot of those type of programs were still needed within those three years. So we took advantage of those lifts of the requirement. And so I think we originally had thought that we would help about 150 people through public services, and we ended up helping around 13,000 by using those. But then that also then, as you noticed, and it left kind of zeros in some of the other areas of our goals. As well, we had a few large projects that we're no longer able to go through just because of their own circumstances that we were planning on having go through, such as the medical center for GIPS that we had planned to put, CBG funding that wasn't something that we could have changed the outcome on, but it was a part of, in those goals, and that was not able to be met. And so I think a lot of our goals in our new consolidated plan are pretty similar to that 2019 plan of really focusing on kind of housing rehab-type programs and meeting different areas than what we were able to meet previously.
In some other correspondence that I had with you, I thought it was, it's very interesting, and you touched on that already. The target at one point was 150 individuals, but you were able to help over 13,600 individuals, which is a pretty big number. That's pretty darn good. And the other thing I really liked that I saw that I think is excellent, it says, "It's always been our practice that our CBDG funds be given the opportunity to be utilized through community partnerships instead of city projects." I think that's a very good emphasis that you have. And then you go on to say that although sometimes those projects aren't going to be completed, we have to look at city projects to use those funds so that we can benefit something. So I really appreciate that. I just, when I look at a worksheet, it's just, it's a lot of numbers, but when you capture it together, that you've been able to help over 13,000 people, and that we're able to try to engage the community partnerships as much as possible. I think these are all very positives for us. And as we move forward, you say a lot of those goals, they're similar to what we had the previous five years. And hopefully, another thing called COVID doesn't come along to kind of screw things up. But now you think we'll be able to really focus on some of those other core goals that you're really wanting to do to start with?
Correct. I think some of the ones that we had listed before were those housing rehab-type programs coming into our community that we don't have that many. I believe we, with the Habitat and Heartland United Way contracts and subrecipient agreements we just went into, hopefully, those will kind of start taking off, and we can get some numbers into those areas sooner rather than later into this five-year plan.
And we weren't able really to talk about the Heartland United Way agreement that you've had recently at the last meeting, when I was hoping to, it's just the timing wasn't good for them or for you. Can you kind of catch us up again to what the United Way program is? Because there were some good things there.
Yeah, and so one of our goals in 2019, and through our kind of our community engagement, was that we really needed some of our low-to-moder income housing. Homeowners and rental also kind of just needed some revamping and some help in our housing stock that we have. And so we have designated to do an owner occupied with housing rehab with Habitat for Humanity. And then we also put about 100,000 of CBG funds of this previous year into Heartland United Way to do a rental occupied. And so that will really help if someone needs, like, mobility issues have came up, and they kind of need those fixes in order to stay in their rental home versus going to a skilled care facility, or if there's safety hazards within the home that aren't able to be fixed either by the landlord or the tenant, for whatever reason. We have this funding here that could help with that. I believe that the program will be set up, that it will be, some matching funds will have to go into it by the landlord, and that there will be kind of rates locked in place for about a year or two with that in order to receive the funding, as well as keeping a low-to-moder income person within that residence for it.
All right, very good. Some good things coming down the pike here, it looks like. Thank you, Amber.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8A, public hearing request from Grand Island Casino Resort LLC, DBA Grand Island Casino Resort, 777 East Foner Park Road, for a Class C liquor license. Mrs. Sisneros?
An application for a Class C liquor license filed with the Liquor Control Commission was received by the city on November 27, 2024. Notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing published on December 7, 2024. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing mailed on December 7, 2024, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. A departmental reports were received as required by City Code. Recommendation: Approve upon final inspection.
Public hearing is now open, if there's anybody that would like to speak on this. If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution 2024-340.
Mr. Lanfair? Discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8B, public hearing on acquisition of utility easement, 3031 Tech Drive, Central Community College. Mr. Schmitz, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an 18-by-20-foot easement to facilitate a welding service to a building at Central Community College. Thank you.
There are motion?
No, I announced that there's public hearings.
I'm sorry, public hearing is now open. If there are any in the audience who'd like to speak on this? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Motion is in order. Mr. Lanfair?
I move that we approve 2024-341, approving the acquisition of the utility easement.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair. Mr. O'Neil?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Council members, I have a conflict of interest on 8C. That being the case, I'm turning the matter over to Mr. Sheard.
All right, public hearing 8C, public hearing on acquisition of public right-of-way for South Locust Street improvements, Foner Park Road to Second Street, project number 2021-P-6, Williams, Miller, and Crown Lazy D LLC.
Yes, so this is the first of probably many of these type of hearings that we'll have. We're acquiring right-of-way along the South Locust Corridor for the roadway improvements that we're planning on starting on this next spring. Essentially, what we're looking at all along that corridor is either a little bit of right-of-way, which these are... above, but there's some other items that are impacted through the construction that we'll need to account for in the permanent taking. So, for example, trees, landscaping, shrubs, a sign, any of those kind of things would fall under this category. So those are listed under cost to cure, and we broke those out in the tables that were listed in your packet.
Public hearing is now open. If there's anybody that would like to speak on this? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Motion is in order for Item 8C. Mr. Stelt.
Thank you. I move to approve Motion Number 2024-342.
Thank you. Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 10A, Approving Civic and Community Center Financing Fund, Grant Application for Camp Augustine. Mr. Gleason?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. So this is, like he said, approving the CCCFF grant application for Camp Augustine about a month ago. With Resolution 2024-314 on the November 19 meeting, you approved the master plan for the Camp Augustine, and this is just the first. I know the, it says Phase 1 improvements, but we're still actually waiting, because remember Big Muddy was saying they want three phases and it'd be about equal each phase. So obviously, 1.8 million is not a third of 45 or 46 million. So this is kind of the first baby step towards a Phase 1, and it's just, so Libby can apply for this grant that we are able to apply for as a municipality and meet the deadlines for that, to get something going this year and not have to wait until, we're still waiting for, to get that from Big Muddy, the, you know, the, there's a certain way to do it so you don't wind up having to redo other things or have things mess it up. So Big Muddy, we asked them to, we gave them the parameters of the grant application, under 2 million, things that would be good to have done first to kind of get the ball rolling that wouldn't impact other things that we need to do in the future so we wouldn't be causing extra work or all that. So you'll have the improvements and the costs. It is a one-to-one local match, so we're seeking 900,597 from the grant, and then 900,597 would be fronted by the general fund until such time as we're anticipating like private-public partnerships or fundraising to kind of help to offset. But again, just to get this, the baby steps moving, we wanted to get it on this meeting so we'd have time to discuss. And the first deadline is January 1st to 15th, is to get this letter of intent, which hopefully we can get tonight with the resolution. And then that gives Libby from 115 to 215 to get the grant proposal done. So basically, two months from today to kind of, if we can kind of get it through today, that'd give her two months to work with Big Muddy and get those more concrete, more information that she needs to do the grant. It's still pretty bare skeletons right now, but Libby does a great job. She's, she's the best. So we just want to set her up for success. And so real quick, I'll just go through some of the, and again, I don't want to just read things that you can read in the packet. So this is just some things for the, for the improvements that's on that budget. So the first one is the pre-designed services. That's, you guys kind of know what that is. There's nothing really to show for that. But the central green space, and this is from the presentation that Big Muddy did, so I'm just reusing it. And so the central green space, they said, is large linear, and this is from the master plan from a month ago. Large linear open space for events, free play, picnicking, and spending the day outside with family and friends. This area is five and a half acres, which is about three square city blocks. Includes 10-foot wide bike trail connecting buildings and providing accessibility, scattered picnic tables, grills, and shade trees throughout. Former camp shower house rehabilitated to serve as restrooms and showers for adjacent riverside tent camping areas. And so we've got some pictures of that. So we've got this picture here. It's just kind of this, it's like it says, it's just a green, you know, open green area, trees, stuff like that. We're not doing this part yet, so this would still be green. So we've got this here. Here's the different view on that, just kind of an open area, and it will show you here in a minute some what you can do in some of that open area. So it's, again, it's five and a half acres. So here's that same view. Here's it from the other direction. It's this area here. You could have people, kids, whatever age, picnic tables, it could picnic, you know, on the tree, not on the trees, they'd be on the ground, you know. They could have food trucks here doing some event, or they could just be, you know, opening one day to the, you know, to have that done. Then here's like a, that same green space area, and it looks like they're having some sort of event or something. Again, a lot of this stuff is temporary at first, so that, because, you know, until we get the things worked out with games and parks and our, and our Parks and Rec about staffing levels and, you know, it'd just kind of be one-off events that we'd be able to open it for the day, do it, and then, and then done. So that we don't have, Todd was saying, we don't have the people power to ban this thing, you know, all year long and everything, but we could do day events and all that sort of stuff. So it's just kind of an area where people could, could have a good time. And then we have, okay. Then the next one is park operations and maintenance building of renovation. So here's, we're not doing the RV registration on Alice. Here's the park operation building, and here's the park maintenance, and that green area was over here before. I forgot I'm not supposed to be using the mouse. And so those are going to be renovations in a repurposed, park operations and maintenance and repurposed scout camp buildings to preserve the camp's legacy and wisely use resources. And so we're not knocking them down and starting over. We're just rehabbing them, putting in the work to, to get them up to snuff so that they're not an eyesore or dangerous or anything else. It's just getting them to be a functional building. And then the last thing was the event parking, and that, sorry, using the mouse. That's over here, which would be by those two. And this is reuse of former scout camp parking area for event parking, approximately 160 stalls. And so these people could park here and then walk a little bit to get to that green space to kind of use it for a festival or, you know, something fun that, you know, there's some programming put on by the library or something to that effect. And so when you add all those up, it winds up being the 1.8 million split-half grant and local match. Again, we would front, through the general fund, not front, we, we allocate monies hoping that we'll get grants during the year. So we've got this money built into the budget authority that we can, you know, absorb these grants and be able to work on this. When I was talking with Libby, she said, you know, the 115 to get the letter of intent, 215 to get the full application, they make a decision by March 30. And so we would know if we got this, we would be able to do these design services this spring. And then it would be the next spring when we could start the other three things on here, on the, on the project. So very aggressive timeline, but she thinks it can be done, and Big Muddy thinks it can be done. So it's just kind of, like I said, just a little baby step, because it's not the full third, 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 because that's, you know, but we're just, thought this would be the best use of the CCCFF grant for the year. In there, you also saw recommendation letters from Big Muddy, Grand Island Public Schools, and Nebraska Game and Parks Commission. That's just what she was able to get this last month. She's still got another two months. She's trying to get more recommendation letters, and she'll be successful. So we just would ask for your approval of the, so that we can apply for this grant.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Council, is there a motion? Mr. Lanfair?
I, I move that we approve 2024-343, approving the grant application.
Mr. O'Neil?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gleason, I have a question about the budget authority you talked about. So we spent a couple of million dollars to acquire the property, and this grant allocates another 900 and some thousand dollars in general fund money. Is, is there any other major spending in this current budget year that the council's already approved the budget for?
Out of the grant funding authority?
That, that would come out of the general fund. Any other tax dollars that would be, any other major tax dollars? I'm not talking about mowing the lawn.
Right, right. None that I'm aware of, but I can find out for you and get you an answer. So grant funds allocated already?
I'm just trying to see how much more money that we're going to spend that we've already approved in this year, this year's budget.
Oh, how much we have left?
Yeah. How much do we have left, or how much can we anticipate seeing?
Budget authority.
The requests coming back before the council.
Okay. And I could send that to the whole council. Thank you.
Please vote.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Agenda Item 9B, Approving Transition Agreement between City of Grand Island and Foner Park Exposition and Event Center, Inc., for the Heartland Event Center. Mrs. McElhoun.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you're aware, upon construction of the Heartland Event Center, the operations and management of the facility was transferred to an entity called Foner Park Exposition and Event Center Incorporated. The acronym in the packet is FEAC. I'm not going to use that. I'm simply going to say Foner Park. But they have managed the, they were hired by the city to manage the facility until such time as the project indebtedness was satisfied and ownership was transferred to the City of Grand Island. That final bond payment was made on December 15 of this year by the bond trustee. And in anticipation of the transition, we've worked together with Foner Park to develop a transition plan which ensures a transition of the building in such a way that it preserves the event center's value to the City of Grand Island, its citizens, the facility users, and also provides for minimal operational disruption. Since 2004, Foner Park has operated and managed the Heartland Event Center for the benefit of the city and its residents. Under their careful management, Heartland Event Center has hosted countless concerts, entertainment, sports, and athletic events, conventions, and trade shows, and the Boselman Conference Center alone has hosted countless meetings, receptions, weddings, and banquets of all sizes. The visionary leaders of Foner Park who worked to make the dream of a regional event and conference center a reality have left us a legacy for the entire region. We owe a huge debt of gratitude to the Foner Park Board of Directors, past and present, who took on the challenge of building and operating an entertainment venue that has provided years of entertainment and millions of dollars in revenue to the City of Grand Island. In addition, the employees of the Hall County Livestock Improvement Association, also known as Foner Park, past and present also deserve the city's thanks and recognition. These are the people who actually made all of the entertainment magic happen, from monster truck shows to cheerleading competitions to national concert tours. Notably, the current Foner Park executive leadership team of Chris Kattulak and Mark Landis have worked tirelessly and cooperatively with city staff over the past year to prepare for this transition day. I and my team want to express our appreciation for all of their work and the work of their entire team to facilitate it. When Foner made the difficult decision to transition away from event center management going forward, they also pledged to the city to help us onboard our new management company. Venue Works has been able to rely on the substantial knowledge and resources of the entire Foner Park team, a fact that has made this an extremely smooth transition process. We, again, owe them all a huge thanks for everything they have done over the years, but especially the added work of the past few months. This evening, council is being asked to authorize the mayor to sign a transition agreement between the City of Grand Island and Foner Park Exposition and Event Center, which provides for a positive transition of the event center into city ownership and management. The agreement includes details necessary to facilitate transfer and transition of certain personal property that's owned by Foner Park Expo and Event Center to the city for the continued smooth operation of Heartland Event Center, implementation of the contracts and the agreements that have, that impact the event center. And this agreement is indicative of the historical cooperation between the city and Foner Park in the operations of the event center. Based on the cooperative approach that we've taken, Mr. Kattulak and I are both recommending a negotiated payment of 265,000 from the city to Foner Park for the equipment and the personal property that has been acquired by Foner Park Expo and Event Centers over the 20 years of operating the facility. The management agreement between the city and Foner Park stated that anything acquired after the original construction acquisition belonged to Foner Park Exposition and Event Center. That's why it's necessary for the city to compensate Foner Park for those assets. Otherwise, we'd have to go out and we'd have to purchase new ones. So we appreciate the cooperation that they've shown us in allowing for this seamless transition of operations. And this agreement and the payment of the 265,000 for the personal property will allow Venue Works to really hit the ground running on January 1 and successfully put on the community events that were already booked by Foner Park on day one, thereby carrying on the legacy of the Heartland Event Center for the good of all Grand Island. So staff's recommendation to you tonight is that you approve the transition agreement by the adoption of Resolution Number 2024-344.
Mr. Vaverech.
Well, thank you for the latitude to address the council. And in fact, I was thinking, I've probably been addressing councils the last 45 years relative to the Heartland Event Center and Event Center and Civic Center, so it shouldn't be a surprise that I'm here now. And I might be the seventh mayoral administration I've addressed as well. So Mayor Steele, you're right in the line with everyone else. So thank you. First, since the presentation correlates with the transition agreement, a couple of observations I'd like to ask. It's good to see some young leadership here, as well as time-tested leadership as well. But in the presentation, maybe I'm missing something, but how does it not match up what was presented in the pro forma? In the Venue Works pro forma, it indicated that revenues would be in excess of $7 million, $3 million in concerts and events itself. And when I look at the presentation, it shows 2.6 million in revenue and 3.2 in expenses. I'm just saying, hey, what am I missing here? So when the pro forma was submitted, it was a five So when the pro forma was submitted, it was a five-year plan of events, and it typically showed where, indeed, Venue Works looks like an outstanding company, very professional, says they're going to double and maybe even triple revenues, amazing results, talks about accountability, transparency, involvement in the community. I mean, all those are great. So my first question is, how do you explain the difference in what was presented in the pro forma versus the budget tonight? Then the second part of that, and I specifically inquired about this, is that it gives the appearance that the city's lodging tax will be used as part of that understanding. Now, when I asked that question specifically of you in October, it was indicated that there wouldn't be any exceptions in the RFP other than what was in the RFP. And the fact that lodging taxes would maybe, I think Laura said, would be a, quote, "stopgap", unquote. So that's the second part of why I'm here, is to get some clarity for awareness, and that's one thing I wanted to champion here in October, was more awareness and more involvement, particularly with stakeholders through a transition that looks like it's going to be very positive. But I don't understand the budget presentation and how it differs from pro forma. So, and in fact, I don't know if you can actually answer all these different concerns adequately, and I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, but if so, it might also be deserving of a study session or a request for agenda item to say, hey, indeed, what is the ongoing erasure forward? Now, I think we all agree about accountability and transparency and following the letter of the law. And maybe I'm misinterpreting the ordinance, which is ordinance 9582. If you pull it up, it was approved May 5, 2000, and it calls for a 2% city lodging tax that would be, and when you look at what the intent says, it says to fund the design, construction, maintenance, and operation of an agricultural exhibition center to be built, owned, and operated by Foner Park Exposition and Event Center. So I'm just saying, is the lodging tax with the new agreement come January 1, is there any, any question about its validity? Not to say anywhere about the fact that, should it or should it not be used, retained, expansive, used for other different purposes? I don't know. That's a separate policymaking decision that you all would make. But that's why I asked Mayor Steele to make comments relative to the presentation, because it doesn't match a pro forma, and then it's an unclear picture about the city's lodging tax.
I think the lodging tax expires December of 2025. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
It is. It's set to expire December 25th with the intent of funding, and I'm not stumping for Foner Park here. I just wanted to see, indeed, is lodging tax going to be a part of this or not? But when it specifically says owned and operated by Foner Park, in so many words, that ordinance, unless it's nullified, would continue to go on, but the proceeds then may be eligible for the other maintenance, operations, so forth of all the other ag facilities that we have on that campus. I don't know.
And I think you're raising a legal question that we really couldn't answer right now.
And I, thank you. And I wanted to raise a question for a lot of relevant reasons, okay?
I don't know, Mr. Tarwater, are you available to comment on the pro forma?
Yep. And where I'm coming from is lodging taxes last year increased 7.4%. Hall County's lodging tax receipts is over $43 million. So when you get down to what's the city's lodging tax revenue, it's going to be a lot more than $499,000. I don't know what it is, and I've lost track of how it's funneled, if it's automatically funneled to previously to Foner, to use for operations, but it just brings up, in fact, come January, where does the January receipts go or not? Okay. Second topic relates to the transition agreement, and I appreciate your diligence and hearing my thoughts. The, and I can appreciate the fact that, gosh, going back the last 30 years, I don't know if I relish Chris's and his duty trying to come up with all the different agreements and things and going on on the event center. And it might be a living document, because I think some references are in there, they're talking about rounding up agreements in 90 days' time and so forth. But when I went through it just briefly, I think there was like four points I wanted to ask your attention on. One was the Heartland Event Center Board. Does it make sense that there's some reference to the fact that the Heartland Event Center Board is no more as of December 21st, 31st of this year? I don't know if the Heartland Event Center Board has ever taken a vote on the divestment of the $265,000 of equipment or even Foner Park, but I trust the judgment of city financing, Mr. Ktulak, to bring that matter forward. But it just brings up, is the Heartland Event Center Board, I'm assuming, is no more?
No, the, it's Foner Park Exposition and Event Center is the board, and they will, they will vote on this. My understanding is after the city council votes on this agreement, but it's an agreement between the city and that legal entity that is operated, and they're going to continue to operate that legal entity.
So the event center board will, it will be, it will no longer exist then beyond January 1?
Foner Park Expo and Event Center, Incorporated. My understanding from Foner Park staff and their legal counsel is that they intend to keep that 501(c)(3) corporation going.
Well, and I know Mr. Hossi's served on that board. I think maybe he would have some background, but I just remembered it was four members appointed or recommended by Foner Park, one member appointed by the mayor, all are city council-approved, and it's a five-member board.
Yes, and it's role is, it role is completed, its role is completed for purposes of managing the event center, and the ownership of the event center transfers automatically to the city after the payment of the final bond.
Okay. Very good. The $265,000, it's probably a very functional thing, and going forward, you know, I was, would approve and stand behind that recommendation. The third part is when you talk about all the nuts and bolts in agreement of transition, and the agreement is very detailed with all the different agreements going on, I would just ask, and I know Vince is here with the casino, is there any understanding that needs to be noted for signage to be allowed on the event center itself or any compensation or not? But that's-
It's all part of Venue Works's duties now for the city is to arrange for naming rights, sponsorship agreements. There are some naming rights, Bosseman, Ihusen, for example, that are lifetime perpetual naming rights that will continue to be honored.
Yeah. And that's good to see, because of the generosity of those benefactors from Virgil Ihusen and Bosseman, and, well, the large, large portion of the event center was funded by private contributions. So that's a great, great promise. I think it was made and will be extended. The final comment relative to the transition agreement, I didn't see any reference about the Nebraska State Fair. And when we went to Lincoln and made the pitch to relocate the state fair, the Heartland Event Center, that was the plum. We're saying, hey, this is one reason why to be here, and there were promises made, and I think there's agreements that should be in place, correct?
There are existing agreements that where the, the event center is turned over to Foner Park, or excuse me, to the state fair for a period of days. It's approximately 30 days surrounding the fair itself. It's actually a shorter period than the rest of the campus that gets turned over, but that continues. That agreement continues in place, as does the Fieldhouse Agreement.
So you, so you're okay with it not being mentioned in the, in that agreement?
Yes, this agreement is limited to really the next 15 days, 10, 15 days, as we move towards December 31st. Foner Park's contract through this transition agreement, we're actually extending it to the end of the year, because under the bond documents and the lease agreement, the lease purchase agreement, the management contract legally terminated on Sunday, on December 15th, when the, when the payment was made.
Very good. Well, thank you for your attention, your leadership. I wanted to raise those concerns, but also congratulations to Venue Works. Welcome to Grand Island, of course, and I continue to marvel at the success that all your leadership is doing throughout our city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vaverech, you raised several points, and rather than try to respond on the fly, we're going to review your points and try to get back to you, because you had several issues you wanted to take up, sir. Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve resolution 2024-344.
Mr. Pollack?
I would second that.
Mr. Hossi, discussion?
Yeah, I also would like to thank Chris Ktulak and his predecessors for the 20 years of service to the community of Grand Island and for doing an excellent job of managing the Heartland Event Center. I have been one of the many, I'm sure, council members who have served on the Heartland Event Center Board as a liaison. And so I can tell you, their tireless efforts and work to accomplish many things for the community and creating a lot of events in a lot of places so the community can gather. And so they've done a wonderful job, so I want to express my personal gratitude to Chris and your team. My one question, though, as it relates to the nine-month budget that came up, it was using 100% of the lodging tax proceeds to fund the deficit. And so will this council see any other funding requests? Because we haven't seen any funding requests for 20 years from Foner Park. They've made it, they'd made it work with the lodging tax. And I think the lodging tax provided $540,000, according to the last annual report from the Finance Department, and there's $499,000 being used to balance the budget that Mr. Tarwater had proposed. And so is it possible that this city council could see other funding requests from Venue Works?
We'll actually, if, if and when, because this is a budget, this is a proposed budget. The council didn't have to take any action on it. It's what Venue Works will follow. So under the contract, there is a provision for them to request funding and deposits into their operating account that the city, I believe we're also on the account, are we not? Yes. So just same, same arrangement that we have with landscapes for Jackrabbit. So if we need to make a deposit to cover operating costs, we'll do that, and the source of those funds would be from the lodging tax, because of the language that's in city code about it has to be used for the operation of the agricultural event center. There is more than that dollar amount that comes in annually, and that is, that $540,000 is approximately what we have paid to Foner Park Expo and Event Center every year for, we simply actually disperse the money to them as it is received, as it's collected each month. We then turn around and pay that money to Foner Park, has been the past practice. So under the contract with Venue Works, you will see future requests for funding for transfers.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I just had one question. In the agreement, I think it mentioned that the liquor license does not transfer, but this is our last meeting to okay a liquor license by the end of the year. Is there a plan for that?
Mr. Tarwater, can you respond to that?
There is. We've applied for the liquor license. One strange curve was that I moved here from Kansas, and you have to be a Nebraska voter to be listed as a manager on that license. So I instantly registered as a voter, I'm now a voter. And it was just two days ago that I got a new email from the system that said basically, put in your passport, this just to kind of verify who I was and such, and that was returned to them. So I haven't heard anything from that point, but we've applied for our own liquor license, and from my understanding, we're well on the way to getting that done. I don't have a deadline as far as when that's supposed to happen, but I know that's been one of our pressing priorities.
Do we have any events scheduled that that would be impacted before the next time this body meets?
I don't believe so. We have a couple of small events in Bosseman, Bosseman Conference Center. I think our first real large event that we'll be handling is at the tail end of, I believe it's the Grand Island, forgive me if I can't recall it right off the top of my head, but I believe it's the Grand Island Rodeo. We have the rodeo coming up, we have the dance and cheer, which is not a big alcohol issue, and March, we have the Globetrotters, and there are a couple of others, but so far to this point, there have been no red flags that the liquor license won't be in place before we have an event where we need to do that.
Rodeo will be an event that sells some beer.
What?
The rodeo will be an event that sells some beer.
That I can tell you, that's February 28th and March 1st, so I'm assuming we'll be in great shape by then.
That's good to hear. Okay, I just, that caught me knowing when we meet, so thank you.
It actually caught me off guard when they needed my permanent address, because my first permanent address was actually a hotel, and then I rented a place over right off Stollie Park, and I'm very excited about it. And I really am glad to be here, but we should be in pretty good shape that way.
All right, and now you can vote. That's great. Thank you.
I also served on the Heartland Event Center Board as a liaison, and I always found the board members to be great people, very civic-minded, and I learned a lot, so I appreciate that opportunity to do that. I appreciate all that Foner Park has done in operating the Heartland Event Center. They've created quite a legacy.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to add that in too, about Chris Ktulak and his entire team. They have done everything they possibly can to take 20 years of experience and history and knowledge and cram it into the last 30 days. The information has been, I've jokingly used the phrase, I've been drinking through a fire hose. We all know that expression, just so much is filling out. But the transition from that perspective has been over-the-top outstanding. So as much as I can possibly take in from this team that's been doing it for so long, I have no complaints whatsoever. They have been outstanding.
Wonderful comments. Thank you.
Motion adopted.
Ordinance 10A, consideration of sale of property lots 1 through 6, Webb Road, Third Subdivision. And I'll let you speak in a moment, but first of all, is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we suspend the statutory rules concerning ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Stell?
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So decades ago, the utility used to have a subtransmission line, 34.5 KV line that ran down Webb Road. That line was discontinued years ago. What's left is a, is a regular distribution 13.8 line. And to facilitate the old line, we had about 85-foot of property that spanned from Old Potash up to, I believe, Fayley. The section between Old Potash and North Front is what we're working on tonight, transferring 65 feet approximately to the, about 60 feet to the existing owners along there who can use that frontage for their benefit. And the other 25 feet goes to the public works for right-of-way. That was all done with a plat that council passed in May. So this is for the sale part to allow us to actually transfer those six owners, that frontage. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is in order, counsel. Mr. Stell, or Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we pass ordinance 10A.
Mr. Stell, did you wish to second that?
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
We have completed our agenda. Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. I hope you have a lot of fun with friends and loved ones. That's what this season is about. Good night.